Welcome, this is the April 12, 2023. Meeting of the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals is being held via Zoom webinar. Panelists and attendees are advised that their image, voice, and telephone number may be recorded for the record. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Let me introduce the members of the board. As I call your name, please raise your hand and say present. Jim Royer.
He's not here.
Okay. And Danny?
Yeah.
Ginny?
Present.
Susanna?
Present.
And Keith?
Here.
Okay, we have a continuation of a hearing at seven o'clock. We're a few minutes late for 100 Carter Street. Are the folks here, Leanne?
Well, I see the petitioner, Alan Roseberry. There's a couple of others. I'm not sure if they're part, if they're going to speak, but I'll promote Alan.
Thank you.
Greg Roy has his hand raised.
Well, we'll see what Alan has to say. Is Mr. Roy and Mr. Spalding going to be participating?
Yes, they are.
Lynn, would you like me to promote them?
Please do so.
Madam Chair, Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. I am ready to present if you are ready for us.
Okay. Do we have Gary hooked up?
He's been promoted. He needs to turn on his camera and unmute.
Okay. All right, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group. I am standing in for Seth Donahue, who you are more familiar with on this project. Seth had a previous public hearing in a different town this evening. So we're riding and conquering amongst the others. So I apologize for the incongruence here, but Seth has brought me up to speed with with things. And of course, we're here representing 100 Carter Street. The applicant, Alan Roseberry, is with us this evening. And my understanding as to where we left off the last time we were here was that the board had some comments, asked us to put a few additional details on the plan as well as to go and do some check-ins with the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission, which we have done. And I wanted to summarize the the six points that we have listed in a letter that we we wrote to the to your board on March 16, which we submitted along with the revised plans. And so with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll just go through those points summarizing the the additional information that we've we provided for the for the board.
Go ahead, please.
So the first thing that we have done is to outline the size of the existing sign on the plans. I'm not sure if you folks have that in front of you or if if I should share my share my screen. I'm happy to do that if.
I think it would be helpful if you shared your screen just so that we wouldn't have to all pull them out.
Okay, yep, bear with me one second.
Also allows anyone in the audience to see too.
Absolutely. I just didn't want to be presumptuous. I haven't been before your board during the Zoom era here. So everybody does it a little different. Bear with me here, I'm just getting you folks back on the, okay. Are you able to see the the letter here that I have up?
Yes, but it's too small to read.
Yeah, I'll blow the, I'm going to get the plan on here for you. So here's the existing conditions plan. And you can see here, we've added a label here identifying the size of the sign, which is 36 by 32, 36 inches by 32 inches. So we have, we have that on the plan. And I apologize, I'm going to have to be flipping back and forth between the letter here so I can.
Did you see a letter from the building inspector that made reference to the signs?
I did, yes. Thank you for bringing that up. The building inspector, I believe, has also issued a letter that you folks should have relative to the apartment. The the accessory apartment that exists on the property and also, I think, relative to the sign.
Right, and that we won't call it an accessory apartment. It's a residence.
Okay. I apologize if I'm getting the semantics wrong on that.
Oh, no, no, no. It's been listed all along as an accessory apartment, but according to the definition in the bylaw, you have to have a primary residence in order to have an accessory apartment.
Yes, gotcha, okay. So anyway, yes, the building, the building commissioner did weigh in on that apartment as well as the the sign. So I think you folks have that documentation. So the second thing we did on the plan was to identify the location of the existing and the proposed lighting at the site. So again, I'm going to want to click back over to the existing conditions plan to start. We have shown on the plan, you can see these these little sunshine lights here that we have, they look like like little half suns. Those are the locations of the existing of the existing lights on the building. And then transitioning over to the proposed site plan, you can see here, we've shown the location of four additional lights that would that would be mounted on the proposed building. And two of the existing lights would be removed by the construct, you know, with the construction of the proposed addition. So there'd be a net of two additional lights. Actually, excuse me, I'm sorry, there's an additional, there's a fifth light here in the back. So there'd be an addition of three lights at the site. Number three, I, your board asked us to visit the Board of Health in the Conservation Commission. We did issue a letter to the Board of Health identifying the wastewater flows. We've included that in your packet. And I believe that the Board of Health had no objection to this to this letter that we submit, we submitted. I do not believe they issued you a written reply what we're reporting to you that that they did not have any objection to the the flows as we classified them in the letter. I'll skip ahead a little bit. We, the applicant actually attended the Conservation Commission, a Conservation Commission meeting, and Alan, correct me if I'm saying anything wrong here. But Alan attended a Conservation Commission meeting to present the project and solicit any comments or feedback that they had that they may have, and there was none that we know of. They seem to be satisfied with the project as proposed. Is that a good summary, Alan?
Yeah, that's correct. I did have an informal meeting with them last month, and there was no objections from them that they voiced at that time. And then I did want to add to Greg is I'm back to the Board of Health. The Board of Health, yeah, the Board of Health did request that we do a Title V inspection on our existing septic system, which we did perform, and it did pass.
Great, thanks, Alan. Yeah, Seth told me that, I forgot. Thank you. The fourth thing we added is to update the zoning table to include the green area in the tabular zoning analysis on the plan. So on the proposed plan here, you can see that we have included that green area on the plan. So you can see the the required percentage is 50%. Existing is 52.1. So meeting the standard proposed, we have a slight reduction in the green space, but it still meets the the zoning standard, which is above 50%.
That's amazing, given the size of the addition. But was that covering mostly concrete or hot top or something? Is that why?
That's correct. It's in an area where there's already, where there's already pavement.
Impervious, yeah.
Correct, yeah. This one's, you know, we're, you can kind of see here, I'm on the existing conditions plan, and you have the corner of the building, and then a few feet up is the edge of the pavement. We're actually bringing the building down aligning up with that bottom edge, so there's just a small amount of grass there, and that's the balance, that's the change in the in the impervious cover of the site. The very small area. There was, I think, a spelling error that we had in the owner's address, so we have corrected that. That's the fifth thing. And then the the sixth thing was, we've added a signature block to the plan for your your board's signature, should you should you look favorably upon the application. So we've added those those signature blocks. And I mentioned that we went to the Conservation Commission, so that was the, that's the last part of this letter. So I think that is all I had, Madam Chair. I'll, Alan, if I forgot anything, I'm certainly happy to pass the, pass it back over to you, but other than that.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was just one more thing that I want to mention. I did invite the Brawn Fire Department to tour the site and the existing building, and they did come down. And I went over the proposed project with them, and they're in, they're in support of it. They had no objections.
Excellent, I want to thank you. Not all petitioners take advantage of our suggestion that you go to the Board of Health and Conservation before the hearing. It does make things a lot easier, and it prevents you from having to make changes to your plan and come back to us a second time. So thank you for that. Does anyone on the board have questions for the petitioner?
Thank you, you've done a wonderful job presenting this.
I had one question about the sign. In the letter from the building inspector, he said that the sign was that it's three feet by two and a half feet, and it was within the 12 square feet needed is. But when you were talking, supposedly it seemed it was bigger.
Yeah, we we measured it at three feet by by slightly larger than two and a half feet. So, you know, three by two, two and a half would be 36 by 30 inches, and we measured it 32 inches, but.
Three by three would be fine. Because.
Yeah, either way, either way, we'd be under that threshold for.
Is it illuminated?
No, it's not. Okay, yeah, no, it knows, no, no light on the sign.
One thing I was confused about is the nature of the business that's going to be carried on here, because these site plans are issued for specific uses. Alan, could you tell us or make someone that's not terribly adept at this type of thing, what what you're doing there?
Yeah, we're we're fire sprinkler consultants and contractors. So we install fire sprinkler and fire safety systems as a contracting, also as consulting. So the primary use is office space, you know, for the, for the contract administration and the consulting administration. And the new proposed addition is going to be housing, storage for their materials before they go to the sites and additional office storage space. So it's just just for our business.
So you would have no objection to us saying that all storage would be internal to the building?
That's correct.
You won't have any outside storage?
No, that's one of the the big reasons for the for the addition is to get everything inside.
And how many square feet altogether is it, is the building existing and going to be?
Greg, do you have, do you have that info?
Yeah, I do, Alan.
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
We actually gave you, gave the board a summary here, the last page of the letter and attachments that we sent to you, summarizing the square footages for all the various spaces on the site. So you can see here that the the apartment is 890 square feet. There's an existing 3,030 square feet of office space. And then the proposed addition will be 2,880 square feet for a total square footage of 5,910 square feet.
And the addition is for vehicles and storage of materials, correct?
And additional office space, correct.
Okay, anyone else on the board or anyone in the audience have any questions? Seems you've done a very nice job, Alan. Does anyone care to make a motion? Um, this is for a site plan only, I believe, is it not?
I think, Madam Chair, I think we have several applications before you actually simultaneously. I think we we have filed a variance application because the the new addition is completely compliant with dimensional requirements, but the existing building is pre-existing non-conforming. So I believe the interpretation was that we needed to file a variance with your board for that to modify a structure that was pre-existing non-conforming. And then I also believe that we have a special permit before you because the square footage of the building is over. I believe the threshold is either 3,000 or 3,500 square feet. So I think we have a special permit void for that, and then also the site plan review. So I think there are three applications.
Okay, so we're looking for site plan. We're looking for a variance for pre-existing non-conforming. Do you meet the requirements of pre-existing non-conforming?
Yeah, so we're not making it, we're not making the structure any more non-conforming. As a matter of fact, the proposed addition, if you can see here, well, let me, let me try to orientate the board a little. The hatch, the the part of this building with the cross hatching is the existing structure. And you can see right here, this dash line that goes right through the middle of it. That's the portion of the building that's pre-existing non-conforming with relative to that that setback. The new building is is the sort of the the smaller dash line here, if you will, or hatch line, and that is completely contained within the the building setback. So we have, you can see here, we have 30.3 feet, 30 feet is required against the sideline, and we have 40.3 feet here, minimum 40 feet is required. So I believe that meets the standard for that particular criteria.
Maybe some of my colleagues can help me. Do you? Does anyone see where the building inspector spoke of a pre-existing non-conforming or of a variance requirement?
I'm looking at the original application form and let's see, details of decision being appealed is section 1230 site plan approval, 1130 non-conforming structures, 621.1 maximum floor area, pre-existing non-conforming lots. And a specific relief required requested is to allow, in addition to the existing structure, proposed addition is in conformance with setback requirements. Sorry, that was just really tiny on my, on my phone. But so, yes, it is 1130 non-conforming structures is listed as one of the things. There you go, right there.
Yep. This is our original application that we filed with the board. So we have a section 1230 site plan approval, a section 1130 non-conforming structures application, and a section 2, 621.1 maximum floor area application. And I believe that 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 one was considered a variance application. And to be quite honest with you, I have to apologize, I am, I'm not exactly sure the history on that as I'm stepping in here, but I believe that was the determination made, which is why we filed it that way.
Well, under 1130 non-conforming structures, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with the section, only if it determines that such reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. I would think that this refers to a special permit not to a variance. And I guess I would be reluctant to force it into being a variance.
Yeah, I am, I'm just perusing the bylaw too, Madam Chair. I think I agree with you on that section. I'm just taking a look at the section 20, 621.
Just, just, I'm looking at the building commissioner's letter dated January 18, and it doesn't mention section 1130 at all. It only says this project will require site plan approval under section 1232A. No special permit or building permit shall be issued for any of the following uses unless a site plan has been endorsed by the Board of Appeals in accordance with the provisions of this section. So it is possible, we need to do two motions, do you think? One to approve the site plan and then any special permits?
That's probably true. That would be probably a good way to do it.
Leanne, what does the hearing notice say?
The hearing notice, hang on. I did find that letter that Susanna just read. The hearing notice states a petition for variance, special permit, and site plan.
So all the bases are covered. Just, I don't know if you're familiar with Foddy A. section 10, but it's a very high standard in order to give a variance. I think if we're talking about a special permit, then we can use the special permit as it applies to what, the 1130, I think we said?
Yes.
For non-conforming. And I think I don't know what you would need a variance for.
The Madam Chair, if I may, I've I've finished my exploration here. So I think section 621.1, the maximum floor area requirement allows on our lot 3,000 square feet of gross floor area, and we are, of course, proposing 5,900 and change. So I think that is the variance request, and I think you can see here in our initial application, our project narrative, we, that that is the section for which we have asked for the variance.
Okay, I think we can tread lightly. We, I mean, we can grant a variance, but I think we can tread lightly and say, because an expansion is allowed under pre-existing non-conforming, that that's one of our reasonings, because it's very hard to meet the criteria for a variance under section 10 of Foddy A.
Yep, understood.
You have sufficient parking, I take it?
Yes. We have the parking, the parking spaces shown on the plan along with the parking requirements from the bylaw.
Yeah. You do an excellent job. Okay.
Well, I can't take it in credit.
Well, sometimes you do get very wordy with your applications. But
Understood.
Within them, your abbreviated form this evening was appreciated. Does anyone else have any other questions? It would be my suggestion that we grant a variance just to cover, because the it was originally mentioned. But we grant it as part of the special permit because it's allowed within the special permit for them to expand. And how how did the rest of my colleagues feel? Who has some feeling about what we should do here?
I agree 100%.
I think it's a great improvement, and you're to be applauded. So let's do it that way, then. I think we need special we should probably do three motions. The first would be to approve the site plan and the one that is dated. What's the most recent date on this one?
Yes, ma'am, March 14, 2023.
And it's by whom? Let's see. Dillison Roy, right?
Yes.
So if there's no other objection, questions or comments from the board or anyone attending the meeting, I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan dated March 14 from Dillis and Roy for 100 Carter Street. Would anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, it takes a roll call because we're doing this virtually. So I'll go to Susanna.
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
And I'm an I. The next thing I think we should do, the variance, and I think we should say a variance from the building size. Let's see, how do we want to put this? As, I would just say, as it relates to a pre-existing non-conforming. Okay.
Do you need to mention the actual square footage that we're approving?
Sure, if you'd like to add it in and make the motion, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, do you want me to say the whole thing or just say, so moved, include the square footage?
Um, let's see, what is the additional square footage?
2,880.
Okay.
But actually, the the existing building is actually over. So I don't know if you want to do a total, what the building would be total?
I would prefer to say we're approving a new square footage total than just the addition total.
Okay, so that is the totals, the new total square footage for the for the building on site after the addition is constructed will be 5,910 square feet.
If I could just interject, Greg, that does not include the existing apartment, because that 5,900 square feet is just the office space.
Oh, I see.
You have the apartment, right?
I I see, thank you. Okay.
He's very alert.
I see that. So the total on site, including the apartment would be the 5,910 plus the 890, so it would be 6,800 square feet.
Okay, why don't we do it this way? An added office space and storage of 2880 for a total of office and storage of 5,910 square feet with a total building structure size of 6,800 square feet. Would you be willing to make that, Susanna?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, interjection? If not, Susanna.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Jenny.
Aye.
Danny.
Aye.
And I'm an I. And now the third thing would be special permit. And the special permit would be for an expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming structure. At one hundred Carter Street. Would someone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion, anyone in the audience? If not, I'll take a roll call. Jenny.
Aye.
Jenny.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Susanna.
Aye.
And I'm an I. Alan, your patience has proven to serve you well.
I appreciate that. It didn't take much patience. This was actually very quick.
Okay, but I'm very slow. It'll probably be a week before you have an actual decision. It goes to the town clerk. It has to be sit in her office for twenty days in case anyone wants to appeal it. I doubt that that will happen, but it's twenty days. And then you need to record it in the registry of deeds. And I suggest you do that. Do you have a MyLAW for us to sign? Is that what the registry requires?
I don't actually believe the registry will acquire the plan with the decision in this case, but we can certainly produce the MyLAW for you to sign for record.
You're very, you're very accommodating. Thank you. This, this will be when we do site plans in commercial, we do it for specific use. You have no problem with that, right? Because it will be for office space and storage associated with a sprinkler system company. Is that okay with you?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, then. I think we're all set. I thank you all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, let's see, what time is it? We're past seven thirty.
Do we have a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, you and your formalities. Okay. Roll call, Danny.
Aye.
Virginia.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
And Susanna.
Aye.
I know Danny seconded. Who made the motion?
Jenny did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next up is two seventy-five Central. And Mr. Yuradi is in the audience. I will promote him.
Oh, he's Central or West Street?
I'm sorry, Cent- Central Street, two seventy-five Central.
I, I saw that in, in the agenda posting, it did say two seventy-five West Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think anyone was confused, though. Mr. Yuradi, it's been a while.
Good, how are you?
Good. Do you have any presentation for us this evening?
Uh, yeah, so I have my engineer, Chris Stoddard, is also with us.
Leanne?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that I, that I did verify that newspaper advertisement and no butter notification or did meet, he did meet the deadlines.
Excellent. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Yuradi.
Yeah, so my engineer, Chris Stoddard, is also with us tonight. He'll help answer any questions, any concerns. So we were able to purchase a budding land to this property in order to relocate our driveway and put that out onto Taylor Road instead of Central Street. So the parking in the driveway will be located in the back of the property, so to make it a lot safer, so.
That solves a lot of your problems, yes.
It does.
What are you gonna do with the entrance on Central Street?
The immediate plan, once I get that other driveway in, is to at least close it off with a chain or something. And eventually I won't need it. Right now, it's the only way to get to the, to the garage.
I understand. Okay, but you would have no objection to us saying that the entrance on Central Street needs to be closed off then?
No, I mean, that's, that's kind of the whole point of this, is to get rid of that, so. Yeah.
From the state that said that once the driveways are built that the piece on sixty-two would have to be curbed off.
Yeah, I got a, I got a call from someone at DOT couple, couple of days ago, I think earlier this week, in regards to it. And they said a, they'd recommend that we close it off once I get the alternative driveway. And so there'd be no use for it essentially. So they, they'd like me to close it off once this is all squared away. If, if it's approved and if that's the way it goes.
I think we all learned something from your petition this time around. For some reason, someone at DOT, when you sent your hearing notice to the state, actually read it. And we found out that there's a CMR with the state that anytime you make any change in the use of property that's on a state highway, and Route sixty-two is the state highway all the way through Berlin, that you need to get a permit from the DOT.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he told me, so that was.
I, you know, it's been a long journey for you, and I appreciate the time and effort you've put into it. But it probably worked out well, because you may have run into a hassle with the state after we were all done and you may have had to start over. So it worked out well. Okay, so you have no objection to, this is the, for your site plan. You have no objection to us saying that you will, as soon as the rear access and egress is established, you will close off the access and egress to Central Street, correct?
Yeah, that, that's fine. There's a, obviously a permit process with DOT that I need to go through in order to be able to do that. And, and I've submitted for it. And they had mentioned that I have a year from the time that the permit's in. I mean, to be honest, I'm, obviously, I'm gonna need to pave the new driveway, so the, the, the thing that makes sense is to have them also close it off at that time, too, if it was approved. So that's fine.
Okay, do you have any changes in lighting, any changes in signage? Are you gonna put a sign down saying that entrance is you know, in the back? I mean, I, I know you're, you're only planning on having three folks there yourself and perhaps two others upon occasion, correct?
Yeah, there won't be much going on there, but something on the sign would probably have to say entrance on Taylor Road.
Well, my only suggestion is it should be on your plan, so that we can approve it along with the site plan. Any lighting, any signage should really be on your plan. This just started, you're cutting, you're breaking up a bit. It's a little better, yes.
Okay.
You're going amiss again. I think of you, Mr. Yuradi, every time I see that we buy houses as an ad on TV.
Oh, the ants with the caveman?
Yeah. Oh, you remember it, so it's working, I guess.
Yeah. Well, I, I'll admit that I was a little upset to get one of those, because I'm a former architect and I had designed my house and to get one that says we buy ugly houses, I put personal offense at.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm personally sorry about that. We buy all sorts of them, though, not just, certainly buy the ugly ones, but.
Okay, can, can everybody hear me now? All right, change, change computers here real quick. If I could share my screen here, I'll kind of show you what we have planned and where are the signs. So can everybody see that? I'm gonna zoom in, so. So as you can see, this is the existing entryway here up on Central Street. For what we were, obviously, if, you know, if the project gets approved and that has to be removed, we would have a sign located right on, right on the property line, right here on his property. Less than twelve square feet, we're proposing a four-by-three sign, freestanding with lighting on it. In which case, on that sign, we can, you know, we can direct the, prop, you know, the clients or whatnot, onto Taylor Street. On, if we get up onto Taylor Street here, where the new proposed driveway will go, we're also proposing an, an additional sign there. Same size, four-by-three, same freestanding with lighting. So then that would be obviously the, you know, the sign indicating where the entryway is gonna go for the driveway and to access the property.
I'm sorry, how many feet of frontage do you have?
We have a hundred and forty-six, a hundred and forty-three on Central Street, and then it continues down Taylor Road for, or one, two, about four hundred more feet. But from, from driveway to driveway, or from sign to sign, we have about two hundred and eighty feet, I think.
Well, no, you get one sign, my understanding is for every two hundred feet of frontage, so you're well within, if you're gonna be putting up a couple of signs.
Yep, yep, correct. Yeah, we are, we are within zoning on that, so. We are proposing, we only need three sites, or, excuse me, four parking stalls, but we are proposing five plus an additional ADA compliance site. We do have a thirty-foot by twenty-foot gravel turnaround for the fire. I believe that was a request by the fire department. We are having additional lighting. Let's see, you can zoom in some more, too far. The lighting would be on the back of the buildings here and here, here, one here and here, and then some additional lighting on the garage. But there'll be no client activity over in that area.
Are you just gonna use the garage for storage?
Yes.
And you've read the writing by law and, you know, how many looms and how high and not shining on neighbors type thing, right?
Correct, yeah. We actually have our lighting notes, which come directly from your, your your zoning bylaw, correct.
Okay. Anyone have any questions in the audience or my colleagues? Well, personally, I'm quite thrilled at how this worked out for you, Mr. Yuradi. I think it'll be much better for you and it'll be much better for the neighborhood. Do you have any problem? Oh, that was the other thing. We discovered, by the way, as we were going through this process, that the piece of land that you bought was actually green area for the gas station and was restricted to them in a special permit they got. Well, that's gone by the board and there's, you know. But would you have any problem with keeping that area green?
That, additional lot? No.
Yes.
No, absolutely not.
Other, other than the roadway, okay.
Right.
You would have no po- po- problem leaving it as, because the planning board would be very pleased, because they were concerned at the lack of, I mean, if you look at the gas station next door, there isn't much green area with that station. And this was to be their green area. But if you're willing to restrict it to green area, I'm sure that would, you know, please the planning board very much.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Because it's a bit of a hollow anyway, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, no plans on doing anything there anyway, so.
Okay.
Mr. Yuradi, actually, in the acquisition of this piece, sold, or I guess we'll call it traded, the gas station for a kind of a mu- much more substantial piece of green space. So they kind of still have a fairly large green space now that they, they traded here, so.
From where did he take the green area?
Uh, Mr. Yuradi, I believe it was up across the road, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, Mike?
Yeah, it was, uh.
So it actually becomes a contiguous, it's a contiguous piece now with the gas station that they've been able to generate, still stay within that green, the green space requirement for their property by having this trade.
Oh, okay, well, that, that will make us feel much better. So you purchased that other lot and then did a trade, did you? Is that what you did?
Well, it was, I, I had, as part of when I bought two seventy-five Central, it, it was part of that, it was lot sixteen thirty-four, where it's, it's just across Taylor Road. It's almost an extension of the two seventy-five Central lot.
Lot sixteen thirty-four, how many square feet is it?
Uh, it's one point nine seven acres. I don't know how many square feet.
Yeah, that's.
Almost, it's about ninety thousand square feet.
Right, and that's much, that's bigger than the lot you purchased, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot bigger, yeah.
Yeah, this lot, looking at it, it's about twenty-five thousand square feet.
Then I see no reason to even, you know, ask you to keep that green, as if this is in fact what happened. How do my colleagues feel about that?
Looks wonderful to me.
The, the new purchased piece plus the existing piece is still two acres, correct?
Or?
Which ones you mean?
Are you saying two, between two seventy-five and then these, this piece and this piece? Two acres?
Yes.
It's, it's, uh, there's also, so it's, it's lot twenty-four, twenty-three, and twenty-seven. And the total of twenty-three is one, one point six three acres, and then twenty-four plus twenty-seven is point eight seven acres.
Okay, so it totals more than two?
Yeah, about two, two point four, two point five.
Excellent.
Lynn, do we need to make any comments that it is going to be treated as one lot to make it a conforming lot? Or do we have to issue something for a pre-existing nonconforming?
Well, I don't, I think he's made it not pre-existing non-conforming, but yes, I'm taking that the two lots are in the same name, and if they, if both lots are needed to come to the two acres, we can request that he combine the lots. Do you have any objection to that?
No.
Okay, so as a condition, we're gonna request that you formally combine the two lots. There are other three, you saying lot 23, 24, and 27, right?
Right.
So, the Taylor property you originally purchased, that was what, 23?
23, correct.
Which is the 1.63 acres, right? And then you subsequently purchased 24 and 27. Is that the one you purchased from the oil company?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, 20, 24 is the one where the driveway goes out, and then 27's up behind there.
Is that a little wedge, or is?
Yeah, it's like, it's, it's really an odd section when, like when Taylor Road was put in, it was created, and it's just, it's just really odd.
Can you pull that up further? To show us down Taylor Road a little bit, I think it's on this plan.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Stoddard, can you just pull that up beyond the roadway?
Oh, yeah, hold on, can you see my new screen here? The CAD file. Let's see, hold on. Oh, no, hold on. Screen. There we go, can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So here is, I'm gonna have to go in and out, but here's the property, here's 1623, it runs up to here, and 1627 is over here, is this piece. And this is the on-ramp to, was that 495, yeah, 495 on-ramp is right here, so it's this triangular shaped piece here. That's number 27. So there's really no, there's no use for it.
Right. So you will combine lots 23, 24, and 27, correct? Into one lot?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
You said the piece that went to the oil company was on the right side of Taylor Road going up. Correct?
Yeah, it's, it's right where the cursor is there, it's kind of an extension of, of the lot 23, like, if you see those lot lines, it, it just kind of extends right over the, right over the street there.
And how do you identify that lot? I think you said it was.
That's 34, 1634.
Okay. And you said that that was how much acreage?
1.97.
Okay. That'll do a great deal for that gas station as far as the, I'll have to let the planning board know because they were, you know, had some concerns as to, I think you did everything on the up and up and you made it a very good improvement down there. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the site plan that is dated? When did we say it was? What's the most recent one dated?
The most recent one is dated 23, 2023.
And it's by whom?
Uh, Stoddard Engineering.
Okay. And you have a place for us to sign on there?
Yes, down in the lower right-hand corner here.
And you know that we will put a stipulation in there that you file it with the registry of deeds, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah, we'll file, we have to file it with the decision, because, but yes, we'll file it with the registry.
Okay. So would anyone care to make a motion that we approved the plan of 23, 2023 by Stoddard Engineering, a depiction of 100, I'm sorry, 275 Central Street with the stipulation that lots 23, 24, and 27 be combined?
So moved, it seems to be my turn to make all the motions tonight.
So did you make the motions, Susanna?
I did, I just mumbled it.
I will second.
Thank you, Jenny. I'll take a roll call. Danny.
Aye.
Susanna.
Aye.
Jenny.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. It's been a long road, but you made it through.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Yuradi, and thank you, Mr. Stoddard.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful night, folks.
We have another hearing if you're interested.
Thank you.
And a motion to close this hearing?
So moved.
So, thank you, Jenny, and Keith is a second. Okay, Danny.
Aye.
Uh, Susanna.
Aye.
Jenny.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
Hey, 10 Bigelow. I will promote Kathy Adams.
Thank you.
And again, I'll report that I did verify that the newspaper posting and a button notification, the deadlines were met. And it is eight o'clock.
We did well, we got through the two hearings in an hour. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. Hello, Board, Madam Chair, I think you're aware, I'm not sure if the whole Board is aware, so we I'm going to respectfully ask if I can have a continuance to the hearing as posted today. We had met with the planning board two weeks ago, and due to unforeseen personal reasons, I was not able to get enough information to present to them last night so that they would have a decision for you for this evening, so. We, as our team, felt that it would be really important to have the planning board input before we presented to the zoning board. I hope that you feel the same way. But we've been a long road on this project, and that, that's really where we're at right now.
Okay, if I could just mention a couple of things, you're looking for an extension until May 10. Do you think you'll be ready by then?
Yes.
The reason I say that is, the planning board only has one meeting between now and then, and then we have town meeting, and I know they have some articles to peruse. I also saw, and I don't know where you stand, in a letter from last time for the Board of Health, they're talking about you needed a public well.
Yeah, we have a public well.
You do, you're all set with that with the Board of Health?
Yes, it's been, um, it's been approved by the state, it's a DEP state permitted well.
Okay, could I trouble you before our next meeting to get verification of that from the Board of Health?
Absolutely.
It will just prevent us from stalling you.
Okay.
We're, we're looking for guidance from the planning board about the parking, I think you know, given research and development, that you would need what, some 340 spaces? If it's one space for every 250 square feet. And there was some talk of reserved parking, and the reserved parking would be across the wetlands, so I don't know if that would involve conservation at all to go to and from, or whether they'd have to agree to that.
The conservation has approved the plan as it's presented to you right now. Obviously, you haven't seen the final plan, or you have the filing.
Right.
So they, I don't believe they've actually issued the order yet, but they've approved it in their meetings. And
But it may.
Did not include, it would be a new filing with the conservation if we had to go to the expanded parking requirement, if the ZBA didn't approve the variances as requested. And that's really what the planning board was struggling with, so. We just, I, I just couldn't get what they needed in time for their meeting last night.
And one of the other things I wanted to mention to you is when we issue a site plan, it's use-specific. So if you were to use it for another purpose, let's say office space, or let's say, I don't know, manufacturing, okay? Then it would require you to come back and get another permit.
Yeah, okay.
So you think you can fill that building with R and D?
Oh, that's what they, yeah, we believe we can.
Okay. Without some guidance from the planning board, I don't know how my colleagues feel. But I would be very reluctant to cut the parking in half, you can understand that. Right?
You talking to me?
Yes. I'm talking to you, Kathy.
Oh, yes. I don't think we're looking to cut it in half. But I will, I will get all of that verified and get back to you on that.
Okay, I would, does anybody else have any other questions or suggestions or things that they'd like to see when Ms. Adams comes back, so that we can, you know, prevent having to postpone things?
It's just, it's hard to to come up with questions when you don't really have anything concrete to work with. We don't know what the site plan looks like, and we don't know.
The site plan is very similar to what we presented as the cannabis facility. It's almost exactly the same, it's just a change, it's a different use. So, it's very similar to what was presented, you know, a few months ago.
So the cannabis was its own use, is that, if I remember correctly?
Right, the cannabis was no longer a viable option, given the marketplace, the tenant that we had that was going to rent it, decided to go and build in Illinois. So we lost that tenant, and.
Well, I heard a news thing about how the cost of cannabis has really dropped lately because there's just the market's flooded.
Exactly. So they moved on. And we want to make use of the property, and with the, there's a, you know, there's a 4% vacancy rate in the entire Metro West area. You know, 20-town radius of R and D space, and they feel this is a really good location for something like that.
I think then, in that case, what I would be looking for, and I don't know how else anyone else feels, some sort of documentation that can justify the smaller amount of parking spaces.
And I know one of the things that was discussed was the fact that, you know, a lot of R and D places in the Arlington or Cambridge area don't have that anywhere near the same size parking. But two things came up, and one was that in Cambridge and Boston and Arlington, people don't drive to their work location, they usually take public transportation. And number two, there was a discussion about how many people work from home and how, you know, it's not really fully utilized. But they were saying a place like R and D, you would definitely have the people there because the R and D is usually not done at home. So, again, I think we will be putting some weight on what the planning board has to say about the prospect of reducing parking. Okay, then. If no one else has anything, I would suggest we, we entertain a motion at the request of the petitioner to continue the hearing until May 10. We don't have anything else currently scheduled, so we could make that seven o'clock, Leanne?
Correct.
Is that good for you, Kathy?
Yeah, that's great, and would it still be Zoom?
Yes, the governor signed an extension for the use of Zoom or other webinar forums through March of 2025.
Oh, wow, okay.
And I know the planning board and we are, you know, gonna utilize that, we find attendance is better and it's a lot easier on people. Unless there's some, you know, reason, I know when we do FOTB's, it's very hard for folks not to be able to see the plans, so we might want to do those in person, but we probably won't be doing any of those in the immediate future. Okay, if someone would care to and make a motion that at the request of the petitioner and with the signing of, tolling of the dates, we continue the hearing for 10 Bigelow until May 10 at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Danny seconded.
Oh, he snuck in there on you, huh? Okay, roll call, Danny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you very much for appearing tonight, Kathy.
Oh, no, thank you very much for your understanding, and hopefully we can get this all lined up with the planning board before we're there on the 10th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can get into administrative things, do we have minutes?
We gotta close, we gotta close the hearing.
Oh, we continue then.
Oh, okay, oh, all right, sorry.
We can get into administrative things, we have minutes from last month, do we?
Yes, March 8.
Someone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes from March 8.
I was seconded.
As presented, so it was Danny and Jenny. Any discussion, if not, roll call, Danny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see, what else do we have on the docket, anything else under, oh, we don't have any warrants. If you're wondering, Danny, I'm hoping that, Susanna, you didn't get a receipt, did you?
Nope. I have to, I haven't gotten around to printing out my my confirmation and my credit card statement yet.
Though I think it's a shame we have to put that in, and I paid by check, so, you know.
If they give you something from the class that says you paid, that's. Class that says you pay, that's.
Well, what we, what we did is when we went there. And I suggested it to Susanna, actually, that we. Get a receipt from them. The idea was, I've done this in years past, they'll give you a receipt, you know, that you. Well, they said, no, they'd send it to us electronically. Well, neither of us has received it.
Lynn, can you get a picture of your cancelled check from your bank?
If they cash it, which they haven't yet. Cause I checked the statement because I could, you know, print it out.
Well, does a confirmation email count?
I, I don't know, June, June's usually really picky about. And you know, you prove that you paid, like they want, she usually wants to see if you paid with a credit card, she wants to see the charge on your credit card, if you paid with a check, she wants to see a cancelled check.
Well, in the past, she's accepted a receipt from them. So that's why I, I'd like, I mean, we need to get it done in this fiscal year. You know, and it's May and June, we gotta. You saw the note, because I forwarded it to Susanna, that I got back that she's only working part-time or something? Okay, anything else? Do you want Susanna to mention what you've learned at CPTC? You're more concise than I am.
All right, I gotta go turn on another light though, because I can't see anything. That didn't do much. Okay, so I. Learned about. Spot zoning, which I mentioned to planning board last night because that actually came up. Where you cannot. You cannot zone, change the zoning of a particular parcel for the benefit or. As a detriment to the owner, it has to have a public purpose. And so that was one thing. I learned that. We should have a set of regulations, we're authorized. To. Issue regulations so that we don't have to clog up our zoning bylaws and go through town meeting to change those regulations. So on, in section twelve twenty six. We have a special permit granting authority. And notice of making, wait a minute. Special permit granting authority may promulgate regulations under this bylaw where specifically authorized to do so. Or where it deems regulation necessary to clarify or implement any provision of this bylaw. And then if we want to do that, and I'll get into that in a second, then we would. Need to make a notice of making of regulations under this law and we have to file it with the town clerk. And one other public location at least ten days before the meeting at which the regulation shall be presented. So we have plenty of time because I haven't written a regulation. And the regulation that I'm thinking of, we talked about writing was. Projects requiring site plan approval and what needs to be on the site plan, which is section twelve thirty four. And. The reason for this is so that we can change it if we need to, like if we want to add what needs to be on that site plan. We can do that in one of our meetings and have. And publish a notice that we're doing that rather than having to. Go to planning board and have it as an article at a town meeting. Did that all make sense? So if we want to, then. My plan is to write a regulation for required site plan contents. And I have to gonna get Lynn to help me write the notice that we have to give to the town clerk. To present it, but we will be. It's a ways out. I'll just say that. Does that sound like something we want to do?
I think it would be well. Susanna, you're pretty good at this stuff. To have you come up with it, the folks can look at it. And they can decide, pick and choose if they want to add these regulations in. I attended a couple of sessions, you know, the usual. Roles and responsibilities. And zoning exemptions. And zoning pitfalls. And pratfalls, what not to do. There's some material in the form of, that was emailed afterwards. In the form of. PowerPoints. And. Other handouts. So if anyone is interested. If they would let Leanne know, I will forward on to her. These material that was received at the meetings so that we can share it. One other thing is Keith has finished. Doing the revised spreadsheet. Jenny, how are you? Are you at a point where you and Pat can start doing the? Filling in of the spreadsheet.
Absolutely.
Excellent, okay. I could make a suggestion that you just lop off the last. Ten years. I don't know how much further back you'll go than that. Or twenty years even, because it'd be like. That would probably be no more than seventy or so petitions. And I just wanted to be sure as far as the dates go. That what we've been using as a date. Or. The most important of them, which is the renewables. For contract work, a home-based contracting. Or in-law apartment. We've been using an expiration date. That is five years out from when the town clerk declares that the twenty days have passed. So Leanne, you could. Give them the updated. Spreadsheet. And you may or may not want to just include the last. Twenty years, you know, since twenty, since two thousand. They can turn it in a year at a time and you can peruse it. And then add it on to a master one, would that be a good idea? Cause you're keeping one now, right?
Yes, I've started one for what's come in this year.
Okay, then. Does anybody have anything else?
Lynn, did you want to talk about the? The exemption of the municipal sign, welcome to Berlin, that was discussed last night?
I think you can go right for it.
I don't know if I'm a good person to talk about it, though. I did send a quick email over to the building inspector. Suggesting that it wasn't exactly a municipal exemption. He sent back the April four letter from the zoning board, sorry, the planning board. That they didn't feel it was an advertisement because it was goodwill. One of the things that was said last night was that the planning board seems to think that. The building inspector zoning enforcement officer has the last say. On whether it does or doesn't comply and the. Zoning enforcement officer seems to think the planning board has the last say. And I, Chris Keefe has left, but I was hoping that she'd. Want to weigh in on it because she was part of the school sign issue. And then last but not least, this, if you haven't seen this sign. It says on one side, welcome to Berlin, sponsored by Solomon Pond Mall. And the welcome to Berlin is pretty much the same size as the sponsored by Solomon Pond Mall. On the backside. The only thing it really says is Solomon Paul Pond Mall, next left. And so the backside is one hundred percent. Solomon Pond Mall with the exception of a little town seal at the top. And then one of the things I didn't ask last night, but. I think it would be important and how this is perceived is which side of the road it's going to go on. If it's going on the outbound side towards Solomon Pond Mall or if it's on the inbound side heading towards Berlin. I think that makes a big difference on whether it's perceived as. Advertising versus goodwill for a municipal sign. But I don't, I don't know if we even have a say in it because this seems to be. Circumventing any kind of. Zoning, I shouldn't say it like that.
Well, the planning board, Suzanne and I both went to the planning board last night. In fairness, we were anticipating that. Kathy Adams would be there to talk to them about the parking and so forth and. Of course, we wanted to hear what they had to say and bring it forward to the board. But they also had Mr. Hoffman in. With his welcome to Berlin sign. And it's going to be some seven feet off the ground. It's going to be, I think seventy-two inches wide. And forty-eight inches high. Double sided. I don't think it was illuminated, I didn't see any. Illumination. But. One whole side is pretty well devoted to. This way to the mall. And the other side. I would question that the lettering on sponsored by. The mall, you know, Solomon Pond Mall. Isn't larger than the welcome to Berlin. But that's what they came up with, I understand there's also one. That was proposed. Or up on. Market basket and BJ's up in that area. But I, I don't know what has been, you know, going on with that. Mr. Hoffman was very forward. He didn't want to wait another two weeks. There are only three members of the. Planning board present and the vote was two to one. I, you know, personally, I thought. He said he'd be emailing updates to the. Sign to the planning board. But you know, that's sort of an illegal meeting, is my guess, but. I don't know why he couldn't wait another two weeks, it's been going on for about three years now. But evidently he couldn't.
I mean, it seems, sorry, go ahead, Danny.
If you put a sign. Coming inbound. Welcome to Berlin. On the, coming in on River Road. And then you put on the backside of it. Welcome to Solomon Pond Mall, people driving outbound. Could getting into an accident trying to read the other side of the road sign. You almost made two signs.
Okay, so as you guys know, or may or may not know, my sign was destroyed back in March and I'm getting a new sign. So what's to stop me from saying on my sign, make it sixteen square feet like theirs is. And saying, welcome to Berlin, sponsored by Holiday Farm. And have it seven feet off the ground, sixteen square feet and on the backside. It says, turn, next left for Holiday Farm. Why can't I do that? You know, who's, why can't we have these things popping up all over town now, because now they're all exempt?
I mean, who makes these decisions for aesthetics, the, it's more than just the words on the sign, it's how it looks. You know, you've already pointed out that. The font is the same or the same size, I haven't seen it, I have no idea, but you said that it's the same size for Berlin as it is Solomon Pond Mall. It's more than just. You know. It's aesthetics and Peter Hoffman has a very different taste than I do, but we both live in the town here, I feel like this is something town people should vote on or at least have a sign committee. Someone more than, you know, Peter, I've seen some of the signs that he had proposed and I've seen the budget that he was hoping to work within. Which is another factor, I mean, I don't. I personally, as a resident of Berlin, wouldn't want some cheap flimsy whatever put together. Just to appeal to the Solomon Pond. So I'm hoping someone has. Some say or authority or supervision of, of the one or two people that are making these decisions. Is that where the planning board comes in, so they voted? Two people, two to one on these signs and they approved it?
They approved it two to one. But it will need to go to the building inspector. For his, okay, now. If you read, if you read the bylaw on signage. Municipal signs are exempt, but it's very specific and it can't be for any commercial use. So. I was a little disappointed because a couple of years ago. I mentioned to Peter, you know, the kids at Assabet would be more than willing to make the sign for you and, you know, graphics could create it and. They do a very good, it could even be done in metal, okay, like the other ones that they have existing. And he seemed to take no interest in having children do it, okay? So.
Yeah, again, Peter's aesthetics are very different than mine and probably the majority of people that live in town. So hopefully there's other people that have input, you know.
I don't think there's going to be any other input other than the building inspector.
Well, that's where, I mean, I did send a quick letter and Leanne forwarded over to him and he sent me a letter back saying that it was in the hands of the planning board. And this is where my concern is that the planning board thinks that the inspector has the last say on it. And the inspector thinks the planning board has the last say in it. And I'm wondering if a letter from the zoning board. Pointing out that the zoning bylaw says it's solely for municipal purpose. And that there may be a problem with this and we should probably discuss it before it's finalized. I don't, I don't.
I agree with that and if they're gonna, if it's up to the, to. The bylaws essentially. I think we should at least force the same requirements as everybody else.
Personally, I think the people with the clout are the board of selectmen. Excuse me, select board. I think that. The ZBA really shouldn't get involved in making a decision about the sign. Because if the building inspector were to send it to us. Looking for a variance, we would have tainted. Our. Ability to vote on it. But as individuals to contact the. select board, now they're having, what are they having on the 20th? Some kind of a coffee or something, is that?
Yeah, their coffee.
Okay.
It sounds like this is going to be built before then, if it's already been approved and going through.
And just as an FYI, the building commissioner is going to be on vacation next Wednesday till May 1st, so if, if they're under the impression that planning boards give an approval and you're waiting on the building inspector, I would suggest contacting him sooner rather than later.
And the board of selectmen can say yea and nay to that sign going up.
I would say that they could, yeah.
Right.
Every time a poll is moved or added, there has to be a poll hearing. And the signs I, I gotta be, the bottom of the sign is 66 from the ground. You can't, you're not supposed to put them on telephone poles or trees. And it's basically, it's gotta be for either, you know, telling you to slow down, speed limit. And the town can't be going into, I don't believe they can be putting Stop at Joe's for a hot dog, or something like that on one side of it.
Well, it's disappointing that Chris Keefe is not on the meeting right now. Because I'm certain that, that my opinion and my feelings on this are, would be shared with a large number of people in town, so, I mean.
I agree.
So hopefully, take note, Chris, at some point, and at least look into this, because if you leave it up to one or two people, it's going to be an embarrassment to the town. It's the first thing that people see when they come to town. And it's probably, or very likely, not going to be something that the majority of us are going to be proud of.
Um, if you have time, I do recommend watching the planning board recording from last night when it's up. I forget when they went on. I think it was close to nine o'clock, when it was the sign hearing.
Who were the two people that approved it?
Uh, there were only three board members that were present out of five, and and Tom.
And who, who didn't?
Carolyn.
Carolyn didn't. See, that, that tells me right there, right?
Well, I, the reason I was, um, do we want to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, yeah, we're still, we're still an active meeting.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that my suggestion would be call one of your select board people, send them an email. Tell them that you're concerned about the sign and think that there should be a public forum on it before it's placed, because it's different from any sign we've had before. But I, as far as us as a group, again, if for some reason they send it to us for a variance, for the height, the size, whatever it happens to be, we wouldn't be able to do our job, because we would have already expressed our opinion.
Can you send that email on behalf of the group, Lynn, or we need to send it individually?
I would prefer you sent it individually. Just because if we together say, you know, we have concerns about it, we're doing it as a body. And I think it could taint anything in the future.
Okay.
Just before we go, who is available or not available for the May 10th meeting?
I may not be available. It's a family birthday.
Ah.
Well, you have grandkids. That could be happening every month. Come on now.
Oh, come on. No, actually, it's not grandkids, it's the real kid.
Oh, the real one counts, then. At the moment, I am available that Wednesday.
Okay, Danny?
Yes, I'll be, he should be here.
And Susanna?
I should be.
Okay, I especially hope that, um, or I'm disappointed, Jenny, you won't be able to be there, because 10 big or low. You know, there's just five of us, and when we vote on these things, it's really well to have five of us. And Pat's not here. And Jim's not here.
Well, Lynn, I could try to have a birthday lunch on that day.
I mean, well, we should, Jim should be back and, and Pat may be back. Is Pat not going to be here next month, too?
No, 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 but the whole thing is that they have to not miss meetings.
Oh, I see, I see, I'm sorry, yeah.
So we need, you know, as many as possible to be consistent through the time.
Oh, right, right. All right, well, we'll do lunch instead of an evening celebration. I'm, I'm sure she'll be fine with that.
It's Zoom. Your, your son can zoom in with us. We can all celebrate together.
Oh, what a great idea.
What a fun party.
Either that or we could meet in person and have the patty in the town hall, you know?
Oh, getting better, well, okay.
I move that we end this meeting.
Yeah. Do we have anything else hanging out there? Okay, so we have a motion by Keith, I think.
And I seconded.
To adjourn. Is there anything further to be said on the motion? If not, Danny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.